Your Honor.
Motion approved by Ms. Fatacante, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the minutes are approved. Under permission to enter, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, one contract I'd like the committee to award tonight to Jermaine Lawrence Incorporated, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to provide for the out-of-district tuition cost for one student enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in their special education IEP. Funding provided by the special education department budget, the special education tuition account.
Will be approved, Your Honor.
Motion approved by Ms. Fatacante, second by Mr. Leahy. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, the next item is under memorials. We have three offered by Ms. Fatacante. First for Creighton Rhine's father of Karen Kelleher, a Greenhenge School teacher. A second Louise Mears, the mother of Kristen Kirby, a social worker at the Greenhenge School. And third for Robert Kay, husband of Jane Anne Kay, a teacher at the Riley School. If we could rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers in their memory, please. May they rest in peace. There is nothing under the agenda, under all the unfinished business, but Mr. McHugh had a few items he wanted to address. We would need a motion to suspend the rules as by Ms. Fatacante, second by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor? Any opposed? The rules are suspended from Mr. McHugh.
Yes, in January, I brought a couple motions in, and I was just still wondering if we could find out the status of the two. I think there's two reports I requested, one on the buyback program at the high school. I know, I think it's going to eventually get to the Lowell High School Subcommittee, but I think the request was for the report to come to the all-committee members, as well as the effectiveness of the health curriculum and the merging of the health curriculum and the physical education curriculum at the high school. Is there, can we get a prospally for the next meeting, those reports, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to the motions. First motion is by Mr. Leary.
Are we going to do public participation?
Excuse me?
Can we do public participation? I know we didn't have anyone signed up, but.
Oh, okay, I thought we were going to take it under Subcommittee Reports.
Oh, okay.
But we're.
That's fine.
Actually, we can do it right now.
So it's still under the suspension of the rules?
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules, Your Honor?
Okay, we do have a speaker, and because of the holiday and some sick leave in the office, it didn't make it to the agenda, but I believe Julie Walsh is here and wanted to be heard on some matters concerning the special education Subcommittee Report.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, Dr. Bayer, and school committee members. I am Julie Walsh. I live at 114 Birdside Street. Thank you for suspending the rules for me. I did just come flying down from the White Mountains, just especially for this meeting. I'm here this evening to discuss some issues I've experienced with my son Shane's hearing aid equipment. Currently Shane is in the ninth grade at the freshman academy. Eight years ago, during his freshman, his first grade year, in January Shane was diagnosed with a hearing loss requiring two hearing aids and an FM unit. For those of you who may not know what an FM unit is, it's a wireless microphone the teacher wears, and there are two, what they call boots, that hook onto the student's hearing aids that act as stereos, and they put the teacher's voice directly into the student's ears, removing any background noises. My son's hearing aid, hearing loss over the years has become very much like an elderly person, so the sounds of a radiator or cars in the background or the waves at the beach help, they prohibit him from hearing properly. When Shane was first diagnosed, he was already on a 504 modification plan for his hearing and speech therapy. They gave him such things as preferential seating, special instructions from the teacher, et cetera. Thanks to his first-grade teacher, he did extremely well, staying on top of his class. In June, after completing a mountain of paperwork required by Central, and with the help of his teacher and his principal, Mary McCarthy, I was assured Shane's equipment would be in and ready to go on the first day of second grade. Twice over that summer, I came down to Central with additional copies of all of the paperwork, and I was again assured that his hearing aid equipment would be in on the first day of school. On the first day of school, I arrived, first day of second grade, and there was no hearing aid equipment. I called Central, no one had ever heard of me, no one had ever heard of my son, no one knew what I was talking about. I then called two school committee members, and Tim Golden called me back. I told him my story, he was sufficiently horrified, and called Superintendent Sappatzakis, who was here at the time. Later in the, the next day, I got a phone call from Special Ed that indeed my son would get his equipment, but it would take an additional three weeks to a month before he got it. And the whole problem was money. He, since he was on a 504 plan and not an IEP, no one wanted to pay for it, so no one did pay for it. And since he was on a 504 plan and was doing well, they didn't really think it was all that necessary anyway, since he wasn't failing. Since then, I have run into countless problems over the years. First, there has never, to this moment in time, been anyone in the Lowell Public Schools who is responsible for managing the process of obtaining and maintaining hearing aid equipment, never. I have been the one who has done this for my son. Now, I truly believe it is my job for, as a parent, to be an advocate for my child, and I take that responsibility seriously. But with all due respect, I'm tired of doing the school department's job. I've, I've driven, I've shuttled, I've made phone calls, I've begged, I've pleaded, I've done everything possible. My child has gone months without his equipment. I don't get paid a hundred thousand dollars a year, but some of the people downtown do, and I'm doing your job, and quite frankly, I'm done. Second, the vendor that we've had to deal with, the Audio Hearing Center, has been unresponsive at best and irresponsible at times. And I'll give you a few examples. After Shane's first year of using the equipment, the Hearing Center never provided training, never, for teachers every year. If they did it, it was because I called and yelled at them and said they had to get someone down there, and whomever they trained was the person they handed the equipment to. So if that was the secretary, that was the person who was trained. If he had four teachers, the secretary got trained, and she had to train the teachers. Normally, I went into school and I trained the teachers, and there were times that Shane trained his teachers. I'm talking about third grader, fourth grader, training his teachers on how to do a job that it wasn't his job to do it. Second, excuse me, third, if the, if the equipment broke, which happens when you're wearing it all the time, it breaks, I would go into school, the speech therapist would call me, I would go to school, troubleshoot it, I knew, I knew what a few things I could check, figure it out, is it the battery, is it, is it staticky, what is it? And if I couldn't fix it, I would then call the Audio Hearing Center and tell them, the equipment's broken, it needs to be repaired. So pretend it's Tuesday. I call, and they say, okay, we'll pick it up a week from Friday, Mrs. Walsh. Okay, well, that's not good enough. A week from Friday means my son has to go another week and a half without his hearing aid equipment, plus the time it takes for it to go out, because there is no equipment in the Lowell Public School system to be used if something breaks. So now my son has to go however long it takes to have, with no equipment. At the end of the school year, the Audio Hearing Center goes from school to school, because my son is not the only one using the system, picks up the equipment, and they send it out to be, for annual maintenance. Now, last year, the end of his seventh grade year, before he went to eighth grade, I called on August 1st and said, hey, guys, school's starting on August 28th, let's make sure we have the equipment ready. Oh, it's not back from maintenance yet, okay. I called every week, it wasn't back. I asked, when did you send it out? July 30th. School's out in June. Why did you wait so long? Well, Mrs. Walsh, you're not the only person we have to deal with, you know? So then I called Jean Franco, and I said, you better send someone down there, or you're going to have to bail me out of jail if I go down there, because these people are completely irresponsible. They do not care. They do not care that you're talking about Lowell Public School students. Now, this year, last year Shane was put on an IEP for his speech. The older my son gets, the less he wants to use this equipment. I mean, I don't have rose-colored glasses on here, I know my child. He's embarrassed, but my answer has always been, if you needed glasses, you'd wear the glasses, so suck it up and wear your hearing aids. Every year, about a month after the hearing aid equipment comes in, which is not usually till November, this year it was in October, so about a month afterwards, I go in and I meet with the teachers. I ask for a special meeting to make sure we're all singing from the same hymn book, because I, like I said, if they don't ask, he's not going to give it to them. If it's broken, he's not going to say anything. If they don't, you know, he, he doesn't care if he doesn't use it. And every year, every year, I have to fight slash debate with at least two teachers who tell me, Mrs. Walsh, he doesn't really have a hearing loss, he hears everything I say. And I say, oh, so you gave him a hearing exam? Well, no, but I know he gets what I said. This year I had a teacher say that to me, and I said, well, you just got finished telling me he has a 71 in your class. Why does he have a 71 in your class? Well, he's just not getting it. Okay, well, do you think he might not be getting it because he might not be hearing everything? Oh, well, I suppose that could be true, but you know, he does, I do talk loud. These are the frustrations I have to deal with every single year, and every single year, someone at Central tells me, we're going to fix it, Julie. If you can't get this fixed, then who can? We're going to get this fixed, Julie. And every single year, it's the same battle. I'm literally, I don't want to do with myself. I'm actually at the point now where I am embarrassed, and I'm actually ashamed of myself, because, you know, in my zest, my zeal to be part of the solution and not part of the problem, and to work with the Lowell Public Schools, because I know the challenges that you all face, and I admire everything you do so greatly, and in my zeal to do that, I have put my son's best interest in the backseat for your benefit, and I can't do it anymore. If I had sued a long time ago, I think it would have taken maybe a couple phone calls from an attorney, and we wouldn't be here today having this conversation. But I didn't, and that's my fault, and embarrassed and ashamed of myself. Excuse me for getting emotional. So, I know my child is not the only one having this problem, and if I can't get it fixed, and I know all of you, and I'm not afraid to come down here, and I'm not embarrassed to stand here and cry in front of you, what are we doing for the other kids? This has to be fixed now, not tomorrow, not next year, now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walsh. Madam Superintendent.
I wonder if discussion of this should take place in the Subcommittee Report, or would you, I know, I know.
Subcommittee Report out of order. Motion to take the Subcommittee Report out of order, Your Honor?
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So we'll get to the, do you want to hear the Subcommittee Report first, or do you want to hear from the Superintendent first?
What's, what's Madam Superintendent's preference?
Which, what was the Subcommittee Report, and we get to that topic?
This matter come up at, at the Subcommittee meeting? All right.
It'll be, okay.
So why don't we take the report?
We had four items on the agenda that night. Do you want to go through the whole report, or just take the?
Why don't we go with just this item for now?
The agenda item was the equipment for deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and the processes in place to ensure that extensive delays were not happening for children whose equipment was faulty. During the meeting, a president at the meeting was myself, chairperson, school committee member Connie Martin, Ann Murphy, interim assistant superintendent, Deb Westaway, special education director, and parent Julie Walsh. Deb Westaway provided information to the Subcommittee on how the equipment for the deaf and hard-of-hearing students has been purchased and maintained. In the past, the equipment was received from two separate companies, with a third company providing service and maintenance. Delays in services were attributed to delays in securing a contract. Service orders less than five thousand dollars were used to expedite the purchase of equipment. However, that was not sufficient to meet all the needs. Basically, they talked about how in the past, we used three providers, and it was on needed basis, and then as more and more of our, we had more children with hearing impairments, we were reaching the five thousand quota that we had to come up with a contract. So they chose this one provider, Audio Hearing Center, who were the only people who actually responded to the requests for bids. I guess there was some discussion around the provider, because that was the one we had been using primarily in the past, and we also discussed concern about the service provided by Audio Hearing Center, and who was actually assigned from each building to deal with these children, because I had a motion, which I checked my computer before I came tonight, it was dated October of '05, asking for a system to be put in place, because it came to this board's attention at that time, that students were falling through the cracks. They were not getting the equipment, the equipment was breaking, students were waiting months and months, and so during the Subcommittee meeting, I requested from Ms. Westaway to review for us, what was the process in place, and we were told at the meeting that speech therapists in each building were responsible for these students. We're talking about several dozen at the most, it's less than fifty students across the district, but they span all ages and all backgrounds. And some of the other discussions that came up regarding, you know, teachers wearing the microphones, we were assured that arrangements were being made to take care of this, and I think that's what prompted Mrs. Walsh to come here tonight, that she felt that, in her experience, she had not seen an improvement since the October '05 motion was first made, and I imagine it took a few months to get something in place after that. I mean, my motion was dated October '05, but let's say six months from then, we should have had a system in place and a plan. We were told that we just, the school committee, just signed this contract with Audio Hearing Center, it's a three-year contract, that they will be our sole provider for this equipment, but yet we still hear situations, as Ms. Walsh talked about, where students are waiting months to get their equipment, and so we just discussed those concerns. We had specific motions. Ms. Martin made a motion to have the special education department develop a tracking system for monitoring when hearing equipment has been sent for repair. Included in this system will be the date of notification to the Audio Hearing Center when the equipment was picked up for repair, and when the equipment is returned. Another vote, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by myself, was to have the special education department, Audio Hearing Center, provide to the Subcommittee on Special Education a quarterly status report of equipment needs, purchases, and repairs, and in addition to that, to, another motion was to provide the school committee a report of what hearing equipment is currently out for repair, and how long the equipment has been out, and when it's due back. If I could just add one little note that came out, during that Subcommittee meeting, Mrs. Walsh notified us that her son Shane had been without a hearing aid since November, okay? And here it is, this was last week that the Subcommittee met. She was told by Deb Westaway that she would be contacted on the status. The next day, Mrs. Walsh called me and said, yes, Deb Westaway had contacted the Audio Hearing Center, and they had the equipment, and they had had it for weeks. So, there seems to be, there, there isn't a line of communication. Who is, has the authority within the school department to push the Audio Hearing Center, to provide the equipment, to, or that it was there and fixed and waiting, and nobody was picking it up, I think is, you know, it's indicative of some of the concerns that have come out of this. And so, those were the motions that came out of the Subcommittee. I understand Mrs. Walsh's frustration that, you know, we're hearing from the school department that we're working on this, it's getting better, and I can go back to October of 2005, when it first came to my attention, and I don't really feel confident that we are making the kind of progress we need to be making.
Okay, thank you.
But that was, that was the piece on that Subcommittee.
Okay. Mr. Ma, Madam Superintendent.
I just wonder if Ms. Murphy could talk about, could just describe any information since that last meeting, might be helpful.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, at that meeting, hearing the concerns from Mrs. Walsh, the Subcommittee's concerns, if you, if you turn to the back of your packet here, a report that the special education department had put together for the Subcommittee meeting, the title of is, is "Equipment for Hearing Impaired Students." This was a process that the special education department had worked on. Following the Subcommittee meeting, I met with the special education department, and we looked to make some revisions to this, to make this more efficient. And rather than having multiple people involved with the hearing equipment, Deb Westaway, as the Director of Special Education, is going to be the sole person responsible for the equipment. So when you, when you read through this, it will say, if it's a 504 student, the school contacts Fred McCosker, who then contacts Sheila O'Brien, who then contacts Audio Hearing. What we revised this to be, is that whether a student is on a 504 plan or an IEP, if a child, if there's a request for equipment, if there's a request for repair of equipment, the speech therapists in each building, our response, other liaisons, they would then make the request directly to Deb Westaway. It would not go through Sheila O'Brien, it would not go through Fred McCosker, it would go directly to Sheila, to Deb Westaway, who will then be the sole contact for Audio Hearing Center. Deb will be meeting with them every month, in addition to the quarterly progress reports and the monitoring reports that the Subcommittee has asked for. We're really trying to make this process more efficient so that there aren't as many administrators and as many staff people involved with it, so that there is one person as the contact for Audio Hearing Center, one person who will be monitoring the equipment needs of the system, what is, is out there in terms of repairs, what new, new equipment that needs to be ordered for students. As, as Ms. Dougherty had, had mentioned, Audio Hearing was the only bidder for the contract. In the past, we had worked with the equipment companies that manufacture the equipments, whether it's the Phone Act system, Phonic, Eatalix, in addition to Audio Hearing Center. The new contract, which is for three years, Deb Westaway will be working exclusively with Audio Hearing Center, so that there won't be, she wouldn't have to deal with Phone Act, Phonic, all the different companies, it will be one company, and we feel confident that one person from the system, working with one person from the company, is, should certainly eliminate the difficulties that Mrs. Walsh and others have had with it. So regardless of whether the student is on an IEP or a 504 plan, it will all go through the Director of Special Education.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. I guess I'm a little disappointed in how this has played out. It seems like this has been an issue that has been brought through us at one point, and it seems to have taken a long time, and, you know, persistence through a parent has, again, continued to bring it to the forefront, and then now we have a plan in place to how to deal with it. I see there's three motions, and it's my understanding that, I don't believe these systems are all so unique, that I would recommend, and I'd put it in a motion myself, that we should buy ten extra units. If your unit is broken and needs to get repaired, use it as a loner, so we don't have to wait three weeks or a week to get it repaired. Give Johnny that one, and then when his comes back, take it back. You know, why don't we have something simple like that? Or if it's broken and we need to buy a new one, you have one on the shelf. Here you go, thank you very much, it's ready to go. Why do we have to continue to wait and go through the process? I think they're somewhere in the cost of four to five thousand dollars each. In a hundred and thirty million dollar budget, I'm sure we could find that kind of money to put some on the shelf in Central Office under someone's care, that it could be the same day or the next day, it's out to the school. You know, that's a timely manner. I think that's the basic premise of what we should be looking at, not, you know, I like the idea, we're going to track, and we're going to find out how long it takes and everything else, but, you know, a private business, you know, I'm sure he's not just doing the City of Lowell's FM systems either, he's probably doing a bunch of them, so we get in the line with everybody else, so why not, let's just have something ready to hand out to students? I'm not sure how many students in the whole system are requiring these, but I'm just thinking, I'm throwing out a number of ten as a way, just to at least look at it as a short-term solution, that you have something to, to give to that child. I think what Ms. Walsh said is, even when they are broken, it's taking two to three weeks. That's unacceptable. And I, and I would certainly hope that our administration looks into the statements regarding, you know, the staff members not willing to follow up on this. I mean, that's very much unacceptable. I mean, it's, there's a reason why this child has a 504. That has been established, we need to follow those, the regulations and the rules that are specified into that for that child and his services. I mean, you know, we, we have to, and I'm not sure who follows up from the special education department on that, but I think we need to be doing a little more diligence on that side to make sure. I consider the parents our customers, and we're providing a service to give their child an education, and we have to treat them as they are our customer, everyone. And I know some parents make more phone calls than others, and I think it's easy for some folks to get frustrated, because sometimes it's maybe this is not in their realm of their world, but they're the ones getting the calls, but I think you have to take ownership somewhere along the line, and get it to that person so that we can follow this through by making sure that person's continuing to talk to the parent, not just talk to the company, and then the company maybe will give them a call back. I think that we have to follow through with the parents, so I think, I will offer that up as another motion that we actually, and I think we have some, through the finance Subcommittee, we've talked about this possibility of some funds that might be available, that we immediately go out and buy ten extra units to have them, you know, kept on somewhere in the Central Office that could be utilized for that. So I'll, I'll offer that up as a, another motion that would come out of that Subcommittee as well.
I'm going to second the motion, and I also have a question. Is, is the unit specific to the child, or is it a generalist type of piece of equipment?
Ms. Murphy?
Can I ask Ms. Murphy, yeah?
If I could. The, the units are calibrated specifically for the child. We do have, we purchased the FM systems for the students in Lowell. If, if a student moves, moves to another community, we keep that system.
Okay.
And then if we have a student come into the system who needs, who needs the use of one, we will use that and try to recalibrate it and see if we can use that.
So we can do that, can we do the calibration in, because here's my fear. Because I was, Ms. Dougherty and I were just talking about whether or not it was specific to a student, and do I have to send that piece of equipment out, the loner equipment out now, and wait another two weeks for, so can we do that in-house?
Everything would still need to go through Audio Hearing Center, because we don't have this, we don't have staff that has the expertise in working with the equipment. What we can certainly do, though, is if, if the committee's desire is to purchase additional equipment, to have as replacement equipment, we can certainly look to purchase pieces that are more generic in scope, that will be able to be used as replacements, that can be quickly calibrated for a student.
Okay.
I, I think that was my purpose. I, I think there's certain pieces, like the earpiece is probably the unique piece, but there are other parts that the teacher wears, there's other part of the equipment that, that's more generic, that would be used in the room. So if something else was to break.
Right.
It's not just that one piece, and I think even what they wear, there's sometimes the, there's other pieces that are involved, but I think that there is some frequency issues that may need to be addressed as well.
I wonder if I could just ask if, if your motion could, could be to, to direct that we establish an inventory of, inventory of loner equipment, of appropriate loner equipment? Leave the number sort of to us to figure out what the?
No, absolutely, I just threw the number, it was a generic number.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if that was in your motion.
The motion is actually to, I, I think that's appropriate, to get an inventory of what we have out there, and what would be the appropriate backup informa, pieces or information. Yes, and I'd like that to come back to the committee as a whole, too, just so we have a follow-up report on, on that, and, and we could ask the, Mr. Lang to come up with the funding source, and if it needs to go through the finance Subcommittee, we, I think more than welcome to expedite this issue as much as possible, because I think we still got about half a year left of school, and I want to make sure we have everything ready.
Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I think I was unclear about inventory. I think, I'm assuming what you're, what you're proposing is that we then will have in-stock appropriate equipment that we can use to speed up the process of replacing, and we'll, we need to figure out, and we'll bring you specific information of what, what that looks like, what that will cost, and we'll bring that and a, and a funding source to you. But I absolutely couldn't agree more, that we need to, do everything we can to have, to have on-site as much equipment so that we can speed the process of, of, of replacement, make sure kids don't lose much time at all, if any, to broken or lost equipment.
Madam Sup, I'd like to, though, if we could get a number of students that currently have, because that would be to show us the ratio, what we're looking for backup, so I'm not looking for names or anything, or just how many students are using these type of systems in our, throughout the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I, I wasn't able to attend the Subcommittee meeting, but I had a couple of questions. It says here that, to whoever can answer this, it says that Audio Hearing Center was the only company to submit bids, so how much do we pay them a year for this contract?
Mr. Lang?
Thank you. Their contract is a parts and labor contract. It can fluctuate anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, and it's all just based on the services they provide when units break down and need to be retrofitted.
All right, and they're the only one that bid it, but are they the only ones around, no?
They are, yes, they are the only one that bid the, the contract. We actually worked with the Special Ed Office to put a three-year contract in place, just so we wouldn't have a lapse every year, when a contract ended on June 30th, if something needed to be fixed, you had to wait till there was a new contract in place. So by having the three-year contract, that will alleviate that. We certainly, if we can find additional vendors, could have additional contracts with other companies to do the similar service because it is just a parts and labor contract. It's not an exclusive contract that only goes through them. It's, the issue is finding other vendors in the area that do that type of work. And they really, from what I understand, are the only local provider of those type of services.
Madam Superintendent?
And the other issue was that one of the problem, one of the causes of the earlier problems, as I understand it, was that we had a vendor for equipment, two vendors for equipment and another vendor for service. And we had, so we needed to have a vendor who could be responsible for all three so that we're working with a single vendor responding to all of it. So we thought we were, as I understand it, we thought we were correcting the problem by going to a single vendor for both the equipment and the service, but that still hasn't solved the problem. So we need to, we need to both increase the competition, if that's possible, for the, for the, for the contract.
I just had a couple of comments. I mean, the Lowell School District is a big district and you can't, Madam Superintendent, you can't keep an eye on everybody. But we're supposed to have departments to keep an eye on this stuff. And I'm embarrassed to sit here and hear a parent come up and say that. And, you know, since I've been a board member, we've had problems with our special ed department. So this needs to be straightened out right away and I'm glad that, you know, there's some procedures that are going to happen here. Is that what you talked about? I mean, I wish you'd, you know, really came to us a little bit earlier and when I hear you say eight years and last year and this year. You know, things really need to change and we need to make people accountable. I mean, we all sit here and we volunteer our time, but we don't get paid the big bucks either. And I feel sometimes like we're running, you know, I mean, we have to do everything and we shouldn't be because we have people in charge. We have department heads. I'm not really familiar with these FM, these pieces of audio hearing, but, you know, I mean, we need to get on the ball here and make sure we get a product that works. I mean, if any one of us had hearing loss or sight loss for a day or two, you know, we'd get something fixed right away. So I, you know, I, we can't sit here and point fingers, but let's get this straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin and then Mr. Leary.
Thank you very much. You know, I think obviously we're all reacting, I think, in a very similar way. But I do think there are a couple of points I'd like to make just having sat through the meeting and having heard directly from this parent who's taken the time to really share with us this story. I can say for myself, I was not aware of this problem until I heard it directly at this meeting. And I think there are a number of different aspects of it that we need to pay particular attention to. The thought process behind putting in place a tracking system really is a matter of recognizing that we have a contractual relationship with this company. Our due diligence on our part is to have the facts to back up when we say they're not performing to standard. This is our job and this is what we need to do. I think that we're all shocked by the anecdotal evidence that we're seeing. And now we need to do the background work and we need to make sure that we're laying in place what the exact expectations are for us in working with this one specific company. I know that it is, well, my understanding that this is the only, the only company like this located in our city. And I, while I recognize, I'm sure they're working with a number of different districts and I'm sure they're working with, you know, with clients from, you know, a broad area. The reality is, is that they're, they're located right in our city. We should be able to make this process far more streamlined than it is right now. And the tracking process really is, I think, critical in terms of where we go from here in ensuring that we have accurate information as to where we're falling down and where the problems are. I'd also like to recommend that there are other, other students on 504s, other students on IEPs who have similar requirements for equipment. As I was reading over the minutes before I came to the meeting this evening, it occurs to me that this might be something that special ed should be tracking across, across different situations, not simply the hearing one. Having never heard of this issue before, I have grave concerns that there are other similar issues that I myself am not aware of and that this committee is not aware of. So in the name of trying to take an important step forward, I'd like to ensure that we include all of the, all of the similar type situations where students will require equipment and where it's incumbent upon us, let's just say it legally, to provide it. The final point I'd like to make, and, you know, I recognize that there are aspects of this that are, can be laid at the feet of bureaucracy. I recognize that there are a lot of different places where blame can be placed. And I think that, you know, it's certainly important that we solve the problem rather than, you know, spend a lot of time on what's gone wrong. But, you know, I have to tell you, and I think it'd be, I'd be remiss if I didn't, to have heard a parent speak clearly and articulately about the fights she's had to have with teaching staff, with individuals who are at the front of our classrooms, to have to, to, for teachers to be looking at this as a burden. I understand it may be a challenge, but there's a student sitting in their classrooms who requires this. I was particularly upset to think that there are people who would be dismissive and look at this as, you know, just one more thing on their list of things when it is so profoundly important to the success of, in this case, perhaps one single student or when you look district-wide, certainly a number of students. I can't believe that it's a prevailing attitude among the cadre of teachers that we have in our city. But it is something that, that lies with us. That is not something we blame a contractor for. It is not something we blame equipment for. It is something that we need to address, whether through our special ed department or more generally through our assessments and our evaluations. That is an area that we own and that we need to change. So, you know, as we talked about this and as we talk about the reporting processes that we're putting in place, I really think that as we move forward, we're going to need to look to Student Support Services, welcome, to put in place a way that we can ensure that as these students go through our district, they, they are being met every single morning and every single period by teachers who are equipped and appropriate and have the attitude that's necessary for them to be taught. So that's something that will be, as the special ed subcommittee meets again, it'll be something that we can discuss at that point. But I guess fair warning that it's something that simply cannot be abided by and we're going to need to address it in a very significant way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just, I guess everyone really spoke to the point on this matter and I guess I'm embarrassed as well. But I just, one question I have. I know we just put a tracking place, a tracking system in place. Have we spoke with a vendor regarding our issues at this point in time, regarding the inconsistencies and the problems? I guess Mayor threw you to the superintendent. I know we may not have particular strong evidence at this time, but at least we should, you know, we have a contract with you. Let's see how we, how that company reacts to our, well, our issues, I guess.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes, following the subcommittee meeting that Monday night, Tuesday, Deb Westaway did have a conversation with the director from Audio Hearing Center and really put him on notice that the performance has not been acceptable, that we would be looking to have monthly dialogue, monthly meetings with him and looking at what equipment is out, what our equipment needs are and have a really tight monitoring system. So he has been put on notice.
Well, thank you.
Okay. I too would just like to add that, you know, as much as can be done with process and systems and contractors is, should be done and in fact, it probably should have been done a long time ago. Fact of the matter remains, it's at the committee now and it will be done now. But that's not going to solve problems like a teacher saying, you know, your child doesn't need this. He can hear me fine. And that just shouldn't be the case. Nor should it be the case that a staff person is saying, "Listen, I'm sorry, Mrs. Walsh. We have other students we have to take care of." You know, "We'll get, we'll get the equipment sent out when we get it sent out." So, you know, and I too have the concern that this may be a more systemic problem than just, you know, one or two individual students. So certainly there are many challenges in the school system, but what's happened in this particular case really should not be tolerated and won't be tolerated. So people responsible for this need to be aware that performance needs to improve significantly concerning this issue in particular and the other equipment needs that special ed students have. Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted to add one thing. I know of three anecdotal stories similar to Mrs. Walsh. Mrs. Walsh was the one who attended the subcommittee meeting. And I think, I mentioned one of them at the subcommittee. I'm not going to go into the details of it now, but I guess from my perspective as a parent, I wish that we could have a sense of urgency about some of this stuff. I don't hear the urgency from some of the people who are responsible for making sure these processes and these systems work. And I'll just give the example of when Mrs. Walsh found out the next day that the equipment had been at the Audio Hearing Center for weeks and she was told that Shane would have the equipment the next day for school unless it was a snow day, which it did turn out to be a snow day, in which case the date would be two weeks from then. And I look at it as every day is a day lost of learning and that, you know, an administrator in our employ would relay that information to a parent or another administrator who said, "Well, that mother's kind of emotional." When I told him the story about the second grade Latino boy who had to wait till February to get his hearing aid and I said, "I don't know if you have children of your own, but if that was my child, emotional wouldn't be the word for how I would feel." I don't, that's an intangible thing. I don't know how we can instill that in our people. And I know we have many good people every day at all levels of this district, working hard for our kids. But in terms of some of this special needs stuff that I've become aware of, specifically around the hearing impairment, because that's the issue we're discussing today, there doesn't seem to be that urgency. And it is urgent, not just because it's your child. It's, our job is urgent, every child. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Could I ask for clarification? Did you say they were going to deliver it, but if it's a snow day, then it would take two weeks after that? Because they only deliver every two weeks? I mean, that makes no sense at all.
What was that, Ms. Martin? So the hearing aid company goes on vacation when school goes on vacation?
Yeah, but they could deliver it that Thursday or Friday is what I'm hearing.
We also, we also have opportunities where we have a person who does pick up and deliveries. So our response could be, "Don't worry about it. We'll send somebody out to your shop to pick up the equipment. We'll bring it to the special ed office and then when school starts again, we'll get it delivered from special ed." I mean, the, it's not hard. It's just, it's coordination. It's simple coordination. And somebody needs to take responsibility to coordinate it because that, I mean, we have a person who does that for us and therefore could do it for other aspects of our system that need to be taken care of. But it's communicating and coordinating is the issue. So if this guy says, "Oh, I can't do it because it's going to be snow day, then school vacation," our response, Your Honor, to the superintendent should be, "Don't worry. We'll pick it up ourselves." Because, again, yeah, we'll find a way to make it happen.
I think, I think, if I could just comment, I think, find, you know, our attitude, you know, often is, we'll find a way to get it done. It has, that, we have to always have that attitude and always convey it. And we will, I think you will, you will find much better results in the future around this issue of assistive technology. We have to do a better job.
Thank you.
Okay. And in fairness to the system, Mrs. Walsh did say it's not every teacher she has an issue with. But there are some. So I think the impression is clear though. There is room for marked improvement in this area. All right, so there are several motions on the floor. I think the first group were the motions from the subcommittee concerning various procedures and process. Any objection to taking those all together?
No, I think we should take them together. It's really about tracking and providing quarterly reports to the committee.
All right, so with that group of motions, all those in favor of those motions say aye. Any opposed, those motions are approved.
Do I have a first and a second though? We've got, on the, Martin?
Motion to approve?
By Ms. Fattacante and second by Ms. Martin.
Okay, thank you.
All right, as to the new motion by Mr. McHugh concerning purchase of replacement equipment, so moved by Mr. McHugh. That was seconded by Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Roll call on that.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante? Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, all right. Ms. Walsh, I want to thank you on behalf of the committee for coming down here tonight. Hopefully you will see some improvement in this area soon. And if you don't, I'm sure you won't be shy about letting us know. Ms. Doherty, why don't you finish the balance of the subcommittee report since we're on that?
Okay, the next item on the agenda was the IEP compliance report. This was based on a motion by Mr. Leary to look at how quickly we were doing our evaluations and meeting the state compliance. As my fellow members might remember, in the spring, we added some money into the budget to hire additional staff specifically to help us with compliance. And what we found was that, it's actually very good news, looking at our overflow from last year's evaluations, including ones we had new this year. We did 636 evaluations were completed, which was at 80% compliance rate, which was an improvement over last year's rate anyway, which I don't have it right in front of me here what it was. But then when we looked at how many of those, the new evaluations that begin this year, that was at 93% compliance rate. 93% were done within the timeframe prescribed by the state law. Then when we separated out how many of those were due to parent changing the dates or canceling the meetings, we had a compliance rate of 97% of those students who needed to be evaluated within a specific timeframe. So that was very good news that we are now, you know, doing a much better job of evaluating students within the timeframe that the government requires.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Just a quick question. And I have to say, my colleague here has reminded me of this question. The way, going through this, the IEP process, and I know I had mentioned it at the, at that meeting, my understanding was that we had changed our, our use of clerks and our use of the onsite teams and that all of that had gone through and that was the change that we're, we suspect or that we're fairly confident is what's caused this improvement. Right, but it was a change in, an increase, a slight increase in staff, but a pretty dramatic change in the restructuring. Okay. Just to reiterate, because I had said it at the subcommittee as well, that change, as I recall during our meetings, was something that I was personally, I know, concerned about. And I think that, you know, we had said several months ago that, you know, we were going to try this new system, but that we're going to be watching very closely to see if it really did what, you know, what Ms. Westaway and her staff felt it would do. And Ms. Murphy working on this. So I had said at the meeting, "I'm really pleased to be wrong. I'm really happy to see that it really did work and that we have tangible concrete proof of that to see what that, what that improvement was." So congratulations on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
No, thank you. I was the maker of this motion. And first, I want to thank everybody involved for their hard work and hard efforts. The whole premise of the motion is that we added almost a billion dollars in payroll to help with these, with the backlog, if I remember right, in the budget process. Half a million, I'm sorry. Got a cold. Half a billion, a million. Also though, if I recall too, I think, and the, and committee woman Martin was a large part of this as we were working on the restructuring of how we were maintaining the clerical. I think the initial plan that we came out wasn't exactly the plan we used because a lot of the input from the committee and Ann, and Ann Burfee. I think this is obviously 97% is excellent. Let's go for 98, 99. I think that's, that's real cool. And again, I am appreciative of the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Ask Assistant Superintendent Murphy to just a couple of comments.
I just wanted to clarify sort of the restructuring
I just wanted to clarify sort of the restructuring that Ms. Martin had talked about with, with the clerical staff. The, the student, the school-based teams made up of the psychologists, the team chairperson, and the social worker have all been put in place. You increased funding for additional positions, and we're directly attributing the increase in compliance to that model. The restructuring with the clerical staff was not made based on Deb Westaway's original presentation, which was to have one clerk do all of the consents that come in, one clerk do another position, and breaking the positions down. The, the subcommittee was, was not in favor of that model, so we looked at restructuring a little bit different and not necessarily changing everyone's sort of job description or their responsibilities, but streamlining it a little bit, and I just wanted to clarify that in case that there was some confusion around that.
Okay, thank you. Motion to accept the, this portion of the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, report's accepted. Ms. Doherty?
The next item on the agenda had to do with services for students on the autism spectrum. At this time, the statistics are indicating a rise in students with this diagnosis. It's up to one in 150 births now. In Lowell, we have 123 students identified with the primary diagnosis of autism. Of that 123, 68 students are serviced in a substantially separate classroom in about four different schools. We have these programs. And of the remaining, remaining 55 students who are mainstreamed, they are spread over 13 schools across the district. So one of the things we discussed at the meeting was the services we're providing to these students and whether it makes sense to have them spread over the district like that, when perhaps there could be some efficiencies by clustering the students as we're doing with other programs throughout the district. At that time, the response from the special ed administration was, "The students need varying levels of adult support and supervision. They're at varying levels of cognitive ability," and it just didn't seem to make sense at this point to try to do any clustering. So we've got them spread over the system, but we left it with the possibility of clustering at some future date to, I mean, I think of it as a way to consolidate our services, have schools where we have expertise in the schools on PDD students, and give, provide the students with more focused help at a more efficient cost. But it's not something that they're advising us to do at this time, but they do, do annual reviews of how they're working with our autism, students on the autism spectrum. So the motion is just to recommend to the committee as a whole, accept this report as a report of progress. There's no motion to do anything different.
So moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that portion of the report is accepted.
The last item on the agenda was discussing the need for additional staff positions. We discussed how the two of our elementary schools, the Riley and the Batacote Memorial Schools, it's not only just the number of students with special needs, but they're spread across the grades, and it's making it very difficult to provide, especially our intervention services that we're focusing on now, where once you identify a student who's reading below grade level, for instance, you try to provide very focused support in that area. So the recommendation is to hire two additional special education teachers for the rest of the school year for these two schools. Given that this was discussed during the subcommittee on finance meeting on February 7th, and the funding is available to get us through the rest of the year, the special ed subcommittee, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by myself, is to recommend the committee approve the hiring of two additional special education teachers for the rest of the school year, you know, with the caveat that when we review our budget for next year, we'll have to really look at whether we can continue to fund it, but that was the motion.
Okay. So moved by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Okay, any discussion on this? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
I have to make sure. Seven yays, approved.
Okay, seven yays, that's approved, and that concludes the report. Motion to accept the balance of the report as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report's accepted. All right, which brings us now back to the motions portion of the agenda, and the first motion is by Mr. Leary. Request the superintendent provide to the curriculum subcommittee and the school committee as a whole the current status of the Bartlett School as it relates to 2005, 2006 school year compared to the first semester of the '06, '07 school year. Status should include but not be limited to progress, limited to progress made with curriculum, test scores, UMass Lowell intervention, and discipline. Seconded by Mr. McHugh. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. Quickly, this, this motion derives from a subcommittee meeting we had with the curriculum subcommittee in August of '06 regarding the progress of the Bartlett School. It's a motion to follow up regarding the current situation. The brief history of the Bartlett School was a merger in 2005 from two different other schools. There were some difficulties in the '05 year that were acknowledged at that subcommittee meeting in August of '06, and this is a follow-up to see how successful we are with meeting our, our goals and plans for the '06, '07 year. I actually was at the Bartlett School two weeks ago, I met with the vice principal over there, did a tour, met with some of the parents at a meet and greet at seven in the morning, and it appears that they're, they're on the right track. But I'd like to go through, and really, it would be a good idea, I didn't put it in the motion, but it'd be nice to see the, the principal and the vice principal and a few others from the Bartlett School, maybe someone like Don Pearson, who was at the, Don Pearson's the dean, I guess, of the Education Department at UMass Lowell, if he could attend as well, because he was in the August '06 subcommittee meeting, to get a real feedback, to see if this merger is, one, successful, and if it's meeting the goals that we had, had been promised, I guess, and, and goals we all want to achieve, not only from the August '06 subcommittee meeting, but from when the merger took place. So it's, it's a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved, which brings us back to subcommittee reports. The next report is Report of Mayor's Task Force on Desegregation: Approval of the Minutes of the February 7, 2007 Meeting. I did report on this meeting at the last meeting, however, the written minutes now are in the packet.
Move approved, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is approved. The next subcommittee report is a report of the Finance Subcommittee: Approval of the Minutes of February 7, 2007. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, these were just to follow up to the verbal report that was given, given at the last meeting. So it's just a motion to approve, accept the minutes.
Okay. Motion to approve and accept the minutes of the meeting by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that report is accepted. It brings us to reports of the superintendent. First item is Teacher Attendance. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, we report twice annually on teacher attendance trends, so you have the first semester report showing teacher attendance trends over a number of years. Compared to last year, district-wide teachers have had slightly more absence for short-term illness through the half-year mark. 2.8% rate this year versus 2.6% last year. Absences for, for short-term illness among high school teachers saw a jump from 2.8% to 3.6%, so that accounted for the overall district increase. Principals have reported a, a large number of absences, particularly in December, related to that stomach flu that was going around, so that seemed to have contributed to the short-term absences. We'll, we'll continue to monitor carefully and hope to bring in the, the end-of-year rate at no higher than last year's. It does represent an improvement. We've had a steady, steady reduction in short-term absence, short-term sickness absence among teachers since the 2002, 2003 school year. We're hopeful we can still continue the trend downward.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is on the School Entry/Exit Door Review. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, you have a copy of this report from Assistant Superintendent Lang to me on the status of entry and exit doors at the schools. This is a motion made at the last school committee meeting by Mr. Leahy, asking for an update on the status at each school, and so you have a description of the, of some of the major and minor door issues at various of the schools, and attached, attached to it is a status report on all those where the doors are operating fully, fully properly, and the, and the, and the, these, the couple of schools where there are ongoing issues that the Department of Public Works is working on. Welcome, any questions?
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Well, we just got this report, I guess, through you to Mr. Lang. I'll read this over, but the main question is, all schools have been checked by Mr. Curly and all, any problems, hopefully principals have brought them up to us, and they'll be fixed immediately. I'm looking for the word "immediately" in here, but...
Yes, actually, Mr. Curly and Mr. Gore went around school to school, physically tried all the doors on their own, talked to the school staff, including principals, custodians, checked any outstanding work orders on any of the doors that were there. You do have the chart that does list some of the, the issues that they're working on currently. I had them put a little description in there about what the outstanding issues are. A couple of them just have to deal with, particularly during the cold season, regularly, you know, and DPW does respond within the same day the call is made, but quite oftentimes the different, the adjustment arms on the doors need to be changed or checked and whatnot, and there are a few calls that are going on this week just to do that. But you do have a, a listing of all the, the actions that are being taken over the next couple of days. The only project that is gonna take longer as we get back into the side of the school year, into the side of the school vacation is at the Daily School. We're still in the process of obtaining additional quotes for those doors to be replaced, and that is a more significant timeframe to really bring that project to conclusion, but it is something we're working on in the interim. DPW will be maintaining those doors regularly, weekly, just to make sure that they are opening and closing properly, but that is the best we can do with that situation at this time.
Okay, and I, you know, not to be smart, but we do live in New England, right? So people know that these doors need to work when the weather gets cold and then when it gets hot, so, I mean, if we, you know, we really need to make sure they're functioning properly, and I, I hate hearing that excuse that it's cold out or it's rainy out. I mean, we live in New England, so these doors have to fix. I even see here that the, it says some adjustments needed to be made at the Stockloso School. I mean, it's a brand-new school, so...
Yeah, the Stockloso issue, actually, the door itself is, is working fine. It's the buzzer that is having an electrical issue, so what ends up happening is when a person rings the doorbell to get into the back door of the Stockloso, the receptionist can see them, but when she determines she's gonna let them in and pushes the release button, the release mechanism isn't triggering, so a staff member physically has to go and let them in the door. Far better to have that happen than have to have someone let them in as opposed to someone getting in on their own. But that's just, it's an electrical issue that's being worked on this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fattacante?
Again, Your Honor, return everybody's attention to the Stockloso Middle School. It says no date has been confirmed with the vendor at this time. So does that mean a week from now, or am I going to wait, are we going to wait six months from now for the vendor? See, again, it's the same problem. It's the accountability. Who does this, the vendor isn't accountable to anybody, and now who is going to oversee making sure this vendor gets a phone call every other day about when are you coming? When is, when is, that, that's, that's the dilemma. And I, and I'm not laying this on anybody's feet, I'm just saying, again, it's the same kind of account, I can't expect the principal to remember it because he's got a million things. The secretary's gonna remember it because she's gotta get, she's the one that has to get up all the time, but who's gonna make another phone call to the vendor to be, to be asked about when this will be taken care of? I mean, do we need to send a city solicitor, ask the city solicitor to send a letter that says you have a fiduciary responsibility? Because...
We probably should.
Well, I can tell you, at least on the Stockloso School...
And I don't want, and I'm not looking at Mr. Lang to be the person to do it either, but somebody has to be responsible.
I think the answer on the Stockloso School is we're still holding money for the contractor, so they haven't been fully paid on punch list items. So we, we do have some leverage and ability to get that done sooner rather than later.
Okay, so who's gonna wield the hammer?
The...
The mayor, though.
The, the money's not gonna be paid, that's usually the best motivator you can get.
Okay, so, so maybe we can ask Mr. Curly to be the person that ultimately needs to be responsible for this.
From our end, Mr. Curly is the school department's contact for finishing out any of the punch list items at the Stockloso, and it is something we're working with, with the city's law office and DPW. That particular issue, not to make it a long drawn-out story, is actually some dispute between the contractors that installed the system about, you know, whether the electrical wiring should have been run where it was within the, the door walls and whatnot. So it is, it is a more drawn-out issue than some of the other ones at the other schools we have direct control over. But, you know, it is being attended to. I'll certainly keep this report as an ongoing report in every meeting or two, give you an updated list on the status. But I mean, I can tell you that there has, I believe, even been some work at the Stockloso this week. We took advantage of the vacation week to do some of the punch list items, just to get that project all wrapped up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, I guess, kind of along with that thinking, I was wondering if we could get a status report on all this, let's say, five weeks from now, April 4th, at our April 4th meeting? And I don't know if that gives you enough time with the Daily Middle School. I mean, I realize the first quote was for $13,000 to replace those doors, but, I mean, I, I'd like to know that it's all taken care of. I'd like some kind of a, everything's been done, a list like this that says everything's been done, and if that doesn't give you enough time, give us a date that would to, just to provide that kind of follow-through, not to assume it's gonna happen.
We'll give you an updated report for each of the next meetings.
Okay.
Okay. That sounds great.
Can I just make one?
Mr. Leahy?
I just wanna make one comment, too, that getting a report like this is great all the time, but we really shouldn't have to get a report like this every time, too. So it's just a personal pet peeve of mine, but, you know, we're not here to check the doors every day. We have people do that, so I hope, I mean, I hate getting all these reports saying that this is being done, that's being done. It should be being done anyway, so I understand what you want, but my frustration is, we don't need to get a report that the doors work either, so...
Could I, I just wanna, I think about the daily door that doesn't close, and I was made aware of it, I wanna say, six months ago, a year ago, and I made a call to Mr. Lang, and it was fixed. I thought it was fixed, right? But the door kept breaking because it's a $13,000 investment to replace those doors. It really wasn't something that could be fixed. Now, I don't know if it, it has to be kicked up to this level and become public. I know Mike Arley, when Ms. Fattacante heard about it at the subcommittee meeting, the principal mentioned the story about the kids getting in, and I was stunned to hear that the door was still not locking. I thought it got fixed. So I don't know if it's because it's a money issue sometimes, that it just seems like we, we go around in circles until it gets up to this level. But I just wanna feel assured, I mean, I assumed the last time with the hearing impaired thing that that had been taken care of, and I agree with you that we shouldn't have to get all these reports, but whatever it takes to get it done.
Oh, I know.
But that is an expensive thing, $13,000 to replace the doors, but it needs to be done, right? I, I don't know, that would come out of the city, I think.
Yes.
So I just, it's important when you're talking about kid safety, so...
Anything further on this topic? Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report's accepted. Next, Personnel Report. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, you have a Personnel Report of retirements and resignations, as well as the list of eligible teachers. The, there are a number of retirements, and you've seen, you're seeing them now, in the, the next several months, you'll see a list of those. Our current estimates are that, that we have peaked, we peaked last year in number of retirements. It'll be fewer retirements this year. It's still high statewide, it's still, will be fairly high in Lowell, but not as high as it was last year. So I believe we've peaked.
Motion to accept, Your Honor, may let it be sent to our retire... Motion to accept, Your Honor, may a letter be sent to our retirees?
Yes. Motion to accept and request that a letter be sent to all retirees by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report's accepted. And the last report is a list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, that's the monthly report that you receive.
Motion to accept, Your Honor.
Motion to accept by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. We have three field trip requests. Any objection to considering them all together?
Consider all together, Your Honor. Motion to consider all together.
Motion to consider them all together by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, we'll consider them all together.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the field trip requests are approved. Under Communications, we do have a communication, a thank-you note from the family of John Foley. It is in all the packets. Motion to accept the communication.
Motion to accept, Your Honor.
But by Mr. McHugh, second, I'm sorry, by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that communication is accepted, and under Professional Personnel, we have...
Mr. Man? I think we got a communication also today on our desk. We received a communication on our desk.
New business, consideration of statute disclosure.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we missed a new business item? I don't have that up here.
I'm sorry, for the, this was an addition, a late addition to the agenda, this is the disclosure statement from Attorney Hall. It's the annual, the annual disclosure statement.
Motion to accept Attorney Hall's disclosure.
Second. Okay, motion to accept the communication from, by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, the communication is accepted. Apologize for that oversight. And then finally, under Professional Personnel, we have members of the Lowell School Administrators Association requesting permission to donate a total of 60 days to Catherine Meehan, and members of the United Teachers of Lowell request to donate 28 sick leave days to Geraldine Tracy.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, that matter's approved. I believe that concludes the agenda. A motion to adjourn...
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
...by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the meeting stands adjourned.
Eight, no, eight twenty, eight twenty-one. Good job, good job.